...to order. Item six of seven. Item five point zero, report of action stated in possession. The board has given directions to the superintendent, who entered into an agreement with a provider to offer educational services regarding student number four zero zero seven. Attend this road hall. Then right here. Dusty hand, this is it. Dusty, I'll push it. Dusty, you can use.
Here.
Attend at red office. Attend at office here. If you can please rise. On the left side. Begin.
United States of America. Through our world for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with a just as strong.
Okay, any changes to the agenda, long issues?
Uh, move it up here.
I second. All those students. All those new people.
Alright.
You got it, Coach? Our district mentioned a statement. We are a collaborative, culturally rich educational community, where our rigorous and innovative curriculum prepares our students to be successful contributors to our global society. Item point, item point zero, so we come. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the board on any item regarding more business that is not on the agenda. Without taking action or entering into dialogue with the public, all members may briefly respond to statements made or ask clarifying questions about such topics. Your matter must be referred to the administration. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. At this point, I would like to invite the public for public comments. If you can please speak in my name and your address.
Uh, my name is Carolyn Wolbison Clare. My address is fifteen oh seven. One of my known addresses is fifteen oh seven Lincoln Avenue. Another known address is fourteen twelve Fairway. I am here tonight to ask. Uh, I have copied the letter that I've submitted. I'd like to ask that I submit the letter once again to each and every board member and to the secretary of the board and get me entered into the public conference, please.
May I contribute?
Yes, please. Sure, but I can have some.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Anybody else? Alright, since there's nobody else for public comment, continue to item eleven point zero, reports, recognition, information and discussion items. And eleven point one, the TEDx presentation by Stephanie Lopez and Kauri Murkusco, students at Mr. Goodman's class. Welcome.
Ladies, welcome.
Hello, hi, I'm Stephanie Lopez. And me and Kauri actually participated in Napa TEDx. A couple of weeks ago, we were as a class, created some TEDx presentations and got to compete in our class. And Mr. Goodman chose to, and we got, we got chosen to go and participate in Napa High. And we got to compete against maybe thirty, twenty other kids from different high schools, I think. Uh, Napa High was there, Vintage, Santa Lena High, uh, a bunch of, uh, all Napa County. And it was really, it was really fun. And we both really enjoyed it. I think we learned a lot from it, not just from doing this project or from hearing other TEDx presentations. And we just enjoyed, uh, just being there and listening to everybody's. Uh, the whole presentation was based on redefining success. And we redid, we demonstrated our version of redefining success. And we also got to view other people's version of redefining success. And I feel like we learned a lot from just watching it, even participating in it, so. Should I present mine now?
Of course.
Okay. So, thank you. Okay. Okay.
Stephanie, do you mind if you send the notes as well?
Oh, sure. Okay. So, my name is Stephanie Lopez.
Should be the, the center button. And point it towards the laptop over there. Nothing? No?
For the shots.
Okay. Okay. So, my name is Stephanie Lopez and I'm a Latina. I know what you're all probably thinking right now. What does it have to do with anything? But honestly, it has to do with everything. At least for me, it does. You see, I spent my entire life making sure that I did outstanding in school. Because I knew I wanted to grow up and do something awesome and amazing. And I knew I wanted to change the world. And I knew that with education, I could. So, I never thought that my immigration status whatever affected. Until now. Until now that I'm a senior in high school and I'm finally realizing that I'm not gonna get the financial aid that I thought I would. So, I'm kinda stuck. Because I also don't have the support from my parents. And I also don't have, you know, the financial aid that I always want. So, I realize that, what am I gonna do? I'm a bit frightened and I'm a bit scared. Because I don't know if I'm gonna get to get to the place I've always wanted, which is a four-year college. But then I realize that that's the point. Success is not about, you know, having all these objects and having this amazing household. It's about overcoming obstacles. And no matter what you go through, you will always face them. Even if it's going to college and getting a career. Even if it's traveling the world and finding a journey. And even a blue collar job. You will always face and find obstacles that you will have to overcome in order to find your success. So, I, there was, not everybody thinks the same way I do. You see, I was recently interviewing the newspaper and I was very intrigued to find my article in the newspaper, not just because of this very awkward picture of me, but also because one of the questions that they asked me, really amazing. It was, where do you wanna go to college? You see, he didn't ask me what I wanted to do after high school or what I wanted to do after even I graduated, where I wanted to go. He asked me where I wanted to go to college. And I guess he just assumed that I was headed in the direction, which is fine, because I mean, that's where I wanna go. But then I thought back. What about all those students who were interviewed before me and all those who will be interviewed after? What if they don't wanna go to college? What if they actually wanna go to the workforce? What if they wanna travel? What are the, what are the answers to such a direct question? And then I realized that not everybody thinks the same way I do. And that's, I feel it's wrong. Because now society feels like you have to go to college, get a career, get a job, get married, and form a family, be happy, and to be considered successful. That's the thing. Everybody thinks that life and success is a black and white picture. And forget that there's so many shades of gray in between. So, see, today in nowadays, teachers are sending all their students into the same roller coaster ride. And forget that there's a whole amusement park out there. But we all wanna like, get on one roller coaster and say that we don't like this one and go on another one. And change our mind every time. And that's fine, because one day, we will find the roller coaster that we want and wanna stay on. And another thing is, in my biology class, which is one of my favorite classes, actually, which is what I wanna study in college, we're learning about, recently about evolution. And how there was one, there's this theory called the bottleneck effect. And how, one time, there was a bunch of species of animals. And they all had their variety, right? Then natural selection came by and chose the characteristics and the traits that were most strong, right? Then life swiped out all the ones that they considered weak. So, this is what society is doing. It's going through the bottleneck effect. They're sending the students through the, the net of the bottle and sending them through the wrong route because that's the one they consider successful. The sad thing about the bottleneck effect is that it ends with extinction. With extinction of creativity and of variety of many different kinds of humans what we want for our society. I say no. I say we get, let our students demonstrate their capacity, demonstrate their creativity, demonstrate what they're capable of, even if it's not what everybody thinks is the correct way to do. Because one day, they will find their correct way and they will live happy and they will be considered successful. So, I say we break the bottle. And we let our dreams rescue us. Thank you. So, hi, I'm Kauri Murkusco and I was the other contestant for the Napa TEDx. And just like she just explained to us, it was honestly a life experience. Because not only did we get to share our view on what success really means to us, but we also got to step into the other person's shoes. And it was, it was a time to realize that not everyone's actually the same and that we all have different perspectives of life and different views. It, it was just really amazing. For example, mine, I, honestly, when Mr. Goodman asked me what success meant to me, I went down. I was like, success, okay, so what is it? I, I didn't have an answer. He asked me whether I felt successful or not. And I just said, no, I didn't. Because in that moment, I was, I was like scared, I was confused, and I felt like I'm wanted. And maybe not I'm wanted by others, but I felt I'm wanted by myself because I knew that I didn't really have, I didn't feel successful, I didn't really know what it meant. Like, yeah, like, does money make me successful? Or does happiness does? Because there's like, there's this misconception that success is the key to happiness. But honestly, I think that happiness is the key to success. Because not around, not every time much will make you happy. Let's take a look at, like, all the richest person, like, what if he's, he has all the money, you know? But yet, um, there's something inside that he feels like kind of, there's nothing feeling, well, he really, like, his happiness. I don't know, it's just, it was amazing. But yeah, I think Stephanie already explained much of it. Yeah.
I'm just trying to say, me and David went to the TEDx, the one. And your talk, and I'm sure your talking to the gal that won, who presented, killed. I mean, she was better than all the others there. She was like, oh. And we're so proud to see Mr. Goodman interviewed up on the screen. But it was really.
It took a while here and we're talking about having a TEDx club.
So great. It's very inspiring, but you guys did awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodman, I would like to hear very much as to how this experience, going through it, has changed you as a teacher.
I think that what we're looking for is effective experience for students. And give them the opportunity to be connected with other young people, or not just young people, people all over the world. Um, TEDx is an experience of not just presenting, you know, in a very personal manner. And I'm real proud of it. I, I just started experimenting with it last year and then finding out that lots and lots of possibilities. Certainly, you offer university national community, there's plenty of opportunities. They inspire each other. I think that after we had that, I thought we were a little bit closer to each other. I think the students bonded with each other. And as a class, we have a common vision. So, I'm planning to roll it out for all of them.
Sure. I, I agree. I felt like we were very, we were honest with what we were saying, honestly. And it just, it was, it was a chance for us to see that, what we think it's hard, we don't even know what the life has for us. Because, okay, let's say I broke my foot and I think it's the end of the world. I'm not gonna be able to wear heels for like a month. You know, whatever, I don't know. But you don't know that our neighbor is over here and trying to deal with what the death of, who knows? And it's the end of the world for them. So, it's just, it's just a time, it was a perfect time to see that, like, how different yet alike all of us are. And it's a way for us to stay connected and just support each other. Because somewhere or another, we're all struggling in certain way. But we are, we're all going through a similar situation. So, that's just, it kinda gives us that, like, this back inspiration to just keep on going and, it's not, you know? And I also expect that, it was, I really enjoyed it because of the way to set out our personal stories in a comfortable way, where it wasn't like, you know, sobbing, sobbing. It was a way to teach others through our personal stories and even learn through other people's personal stories. And I feel like it was a comfortable way to live the experience.
Thank you, thanks for asking. Thank you.
Moving on, uh, face, uh, face two updates, superintendent.
Today, we have the draft, obviously, on the agenda. And with us is Jeff, as well as Dayton. And.
Spencer from Block Construction.
Who are going to provide us more information and what to do in these weeks. Thank you.
Alright, good evening. Jeff Free, Stone Creek Customing. And here with Spencer Revell for Block Construction and Dave Finn for Block Construction. Uh, there's not a whole lot of new things to report. We've been working really hard for the last month. Basically, where we're at in the project is, the architect has finished the drawings. They're at DSA. We think they're gonna come back this week. Uh, we're hoping to get them back in mid-April. So, we're right on track for that. There's gonna be a back check comment period. We should have DSA approved drawings by the end of the month. And so, another thing, when the drawings went in, we put the project out to bid. And, um, Spencer and I have been working really hard together. Come, uh, really Spencer's been doing the vocal work. I've just been overseeing and calling a number of subcontractors. So, I wanna let him kinda talk a little bit about the bid process and kinda how we work out.
Yeah, so the project, like Jeff said, went out to bid on March sixteenth. Give bidders two and a half weeks to assemble their bids and give us their bids by April second at two P M. During that time, we held two different job blocks on both the sides, the elementary school and the high school. One was on March eighteenth, the other one was on the twenty-fifth. The fourth point there is, the finish was pretty low as expected. I solicited over a hundred different subcontractors from all over the North Bay and kind of the East Bay, Sacramento areas, and only ended up receiving sixteen bids on April second. Um, but like Jeff was mentioning, the beauty of the lease leaseback agreement is that I can call a bunch of more subs on April third and try and get more bids from contractors that maybe need more time or needed, you know, additional information or anything like that with assembling the bids. So, what we're scrubbing through the numbers right now is still kind of assembling the GMP book. We'll have more than the transport. We're working, kinda came in after that.
Yeah, so we're gonna spend the next, probably about the next two weeks on the phone with the side, scrubbing the numbers and get the project through the dial-ins. And then when we come back on May fourth, we'll have a project to present. And that's kind of about where we're at right now. I do want to, we're still on schedule. June fourth is gonna be the last day of school. We're moving the, we're moving now, we're trying to close from like the sixth. Construction's starting on Sunday the eighth. And then we're gonna get the teachers back in on August tenth. So, it's a, it still is a compressed schedule, it's challenging. But we think we're gonna do just fine today.
Erin was just asking me this question kinda just before the meeting, but August ninth is the absolute drop dead date for us to meet kinda out of the buildings and get the tickets as soon as possible. Well, we're a shoot for July the first or sometime for the first week of August, but the August end, August day is the most important.
So, did we get enough? I mean, you said the contractor, the sub participation income low. Is anyone worried?
Uh, I've gotten about forty-five bids as of now. So, the sixteen bids that came in were just August, or sorry, April second. And yeah, so more bids have been coming this past week and we're starting to get a little more as well, so.
And the good news that we've been seeing is, you know, when there's lack of bids, the price skyrockets. But to be honest, the bid markets in some contract are changing and they're not just throwing numbers at things anymore. So, the guys that have been giving us pricing, they've been good competitive numbers. So, I would say there's, we've got some work to do. We're gonna have some work to do. So, we're not really worried about it. We feel pretty good right now. We're working good right now, we're in shape. And then the items for the next meeting. I'm gonna have the architect come and tell you the final presentation of the project, what we're gonna build. And then Block Construction will be giving a presentation on site logistics, how it's all gonna work because there is quite a bit going on at this campus. The elementary school's pretty easy. Uh, we're gonna have the whole campus. So, that kind of logistic need, should be number eight about this, a bit of coordination to do here at this school. So, we'll go through that, kind of the layout, how the students are gonna get in and out, how the staff's gonna get in and out of the campus. And then also, we'll talk about the strategy of how we're gonna notify the neighbors, what's gonna happen on certain days of the week, allowing them to base. Any questions? Alright, I'll go with that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next item is the.
So, you continue.
Yeah, so the, the lease leaseback agreement, it's the same contract we used on the previous projects. For the most part, just changing the, the addresses and the dates. And so, the one that, that you should have its draft. When we come back on May fourth, it's gonna have all of the, all the drawing numbers listed in there, a bit more detail on the scope of what's gonna happen. And then, of course, the, the breakdown of the cost. Any questions?
By now, it's.
You're a bit early.
It's just, yeah, right. The same one. Oh, yes, I did. All good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eleven point four, yes, principal.
I, I have the, I apologize for. Bye, thank you. Um, March has been, obviously, we're now, we just got back from spring, right? So, there was a lot of very tired bodybuilding today. Um, in March, we had, we hosted a group of teachers that came from Napa. And they were really interested in looking at the implementation of the iPad. And it was a kinder team. So, it was a complete team coming to work with our teachers. And they observed, part of the day, we had a working lunch together that Ed put together for us. They were very excited about that. And then they were able to ask our teachers questions. So, that was really good validation for our teachers that are hard work that they have to do with the iPad. We also had a group visit us from Compton Unified. And that was a group of administrators and other management level people that were coming for the education exchange conference in Napa. And they came up as one of the tech, I'm not sure exactly what her position is now, but she, they used to work at N C O. And now works at Compton and wanted to also show them the iPad application. So, we're continuing to see people coming to see the technology usage. We also hosted some of our friends from Palom who came to see the pilot of our My Math program. And that's a math program that we will continue to work with for next year. And other than that, we had our last family night at Lawrence Thomas Science Family Night. And it was Math Around the World. So, it, it really allowed for our students to create, be critical thinkers and even some of our parents. And some of the children we have, they had to solve problems. And so, it was exciting to see that they, there was definitely a sense of wanting to complete the task, but also, we could see that we were just very, our students and our parents. So, that was our last very excited, I think we had about twenty-five of them. So, we're in springtime competing on sports. And there's something at the Catholic church that night. So, we saw a decrease in numbers, but we did finalize all for the ninth. And just now, we're really working with our staff with the positive behavior dimension support. And really revisiting that, how we're gonna streamline our lessons so that as the spring begins, we continue to show our students what it really looks like playing out on the playground and structure that around their safety. And then bring that into a spring playground rodeo we're gonna have. And then we'll begin the year in the fall again with that rodeo. And it's all around schools and just being safe, respectful, responsible around the playground. So, we'll care more about that in the next four months.
Are you still using the little tickets?
Yes, we're still using the little tickets. And so, they are very easy. Every Friday, every Friday at around two forty-five, we're pulling tickets out. And we've also all agreed that monthly, we're tossing those out and then beginning them up so that students get an opportunity to, to win something. And it's all, they're all very school spirited. Everything that they get is a little awesome and stuff. So, we're looking at, we recently got a donation from the castle for a wreath that would be decorated. So, we'll be using those funds to purchase more of the incentives. And we also wanna get students T-shirts that have, that are school logo but that really promote that be safe, be respectful, be responsible. So that they can have school spirit and also, you know, messages out.
Great.
Good cheers.
Um, March was also very busy for us. We have our three-year bid cycle loss review on March thirtieth. Um, I've been working with Carla Server and I have to really say that she's a lifesaver. She really loves the data and she digs into it, helped prepare the report, the reports in, in here, the board packet. All the data she helped find and put it together for me. And we worked to work with staff. So, we, we had opportunities to get input from the staff, look at the data, look at the recommendations from the, the actual loss reviews three years ago. And kinda look at what was there. We're, how are we doing along that action plan? Kind of tweak it a little bit. So, we have a new action plan that's also been looking for. And that's kind of the focus, the new focus. Because after a few years, you know, things change. For example, in the first one, technology was a big part of it. And now that we have one-to-one Chromebooks, it's no longer the issue that it once was. And the issue now is more about the training and how to get teachers up to date. So, it's kinda shifted slightly. There's still an achievement gap that we wanna address. And we want to look at our long-term E L students, the students who have been in our district since kindergarten, first grade, and have come up and are now in junior high and high school. And some of whom are still not re-designated as the superficial. And so, we wanna start addressing that. How do we get the academic vocabulary to the students throughout the school? And so, that's kind of our focus for our PD. So, there's several different areas. So there's several different areas in the report that um, that stand out. I think there's some data from around our discipline and school referrals and suspension. You know, we, we were trending downwards, um, I think, um, at the end it kind of came up a little bit. But I think that's kind of an adjustment thing and I, and I have a feeling that, you know, using some of the best strategies, uh, going school-wide with a lot of um, um, our policies, it'll, it'll make a difference. And, you know, so I think that trend is a big trend. I think we're, we're getting in the right, right direction. Um, there's also uh, some interesting data on our staffing and the composition of our staffing. Um, I think you recognize that, you know, our staff is mostly white and our students are eighty percent, you know, diversity. So I think there's disconnect there. Um, you know, we're, you know, in the process of hiring digital teachers. Fortunately, you know, we're still finding that same demographic. Um, we'll just have to figure out other ways to outreach. Um, I'm hoping that the Lockwood Promesse Program that we're starting up now creates a pathway for students who are, who are now our students to become interested in giving back to the teachers themselves. But as a small district, as you know, we, once we have teachers in their tenure, they're here with us for a long time. So maybe the site, it depends on what the cycles are, so can we hit the targets in the tiny, at the right time where there's our teacher retiring? That we could, you know, get some of the new teachers coming in who are, who are ethical in service. Uh, so that was something that kind of stuck out. Um, there's other data, there's progress data, there's a whole chart in here on um, on our self, our self data, which gave a summary of the six, over the last six years, how we're doing. Uh, so our moving kids from beginning to advanced, um, you know, there's small numbers of students. Also, we're looking at the grade distributions. There's a chart on grade distribution, uh, it's going to be grade, um, and it talks over different classrooms. And it shows, um, you know, how, how the grade distributed throughout. Um, that's something that we're studying also and looking at and trying to address all our Ds and Fs. How are we going to address that issue and how are we going to support students who are not as successful? We're also, you know, so one of the things we're looking at is like our Read 180 program. What is the impact of that? How will that change, uh, to improve our reading scores for our students in the separate, like, grade, in the EL students? Who need that extra, get their own extra reading. So those are some of the strategies. We're also looking at ways to support our students in math as well. Um, because you see a big disconnect there. Um, and so we're trying to really strategize and look at data, really get good data points that we can kind of analyze throughout the school rather than, you know, apples and oranges, because we're all on the same page. Um, and that's another, another thing that we definitely can talk about and look to address. Um, again, there's several different, there's, there's a lot of data in here. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, and each of these things we, we look at with our departments. So the math department looked at the math data and kind of gave us comments. The English department gave us data. Um, the, the social studies department, they looked at our English data also. And it's because they are supporting every, I mean, everybody's supporting everybody else in this project. You can't do it, you can't just follow the English teachers. And so we're trying to spread that out and make it, you know, visible for everybody so that we can all look at it as a team and try to address, um, you know, the areas that we need to improve. You know, we've created the, the action plan for next year with the five goals to address what we saw as the areas of, of concern. And, you know, the, the loss team was consisted of two men who were on the last one. Um, they were very impressed. They spoke to students, they spoke to teachers, um, they spoke to Jane and a few, a few other people from the district office just to get a sense of how much of a team you really are in supporting our students. And when they walked away, they were very excited and, um, expecting a report any, any moment. And they, you know, they, they said that they would get back to it with a formal report. Um, but their feedback when they left was, oh, things are looking great, you know, breaking forward. Again, I have to tell you, Carla, she did a lot of, a lot of the data gathering and putting that together. Um, it's just wonderful that she, that she, that we have her to support us in that. Um, there's other things happening on campus and I, I know that Jessica's going to address some of them.
Before I turn it over, I would like to basically add that I have asked David, I think what we had is providing for a three-year cycle. And very well presented, so I would like for David to continue to update that on a yearly basis. So it comes back to you and it comes to me too, to report. And it can be a five-year cycle, it doesn't have to be a seven-year or...
Well, I think you could get, I mean, we can just add upon it.
Right, but I think the last five years is always good to look at the last five years, it's a trend, you see. I'd like to, it's a good starting point.
Can I just ask a quick question? So do they need to be in format of the report that they might be doing today? Or did you create all these data points yourself?
So a lot of the data points really came from the last reports, and these were created in the last report. Um, so this is just a continuation of that, but they did give us a format. So if you look, there's a section on like significant changes to the school, you know, background information, things like that. And that's kind of their format, but we had all the data from the last report and we kind of just updated a lot of that. Um, and we felt that that would be, that would help people get heard and tell the story. Uh, and then we gave our certifications of why we did justification for the, for the, for why we followed.
I would also like to highlight here the donation that we have received for eighteen thousand from the Napa Valley Community Foundation, and that's under consent agenda. And that comes from the Oregon American Davis and Davenport Fund. I don't know if you recall, but a couple of years ago, we started working on, on this project right here. There was a gentleman from Santa Ana who left a substantial amount of money. And basically his objective, his purpose was that whatever proceeds from that investment would come from the silver. Uh, and this is the first eighteen thousand funding that we get. And we anticipate that it will continue over the years. And the Abbott program has been selected as a program to invest this money.
So a lot of the, so the money will be used for teachers to go to training over the summer as well as our commitment towards training all teachers in Abbott. So there's strategies in the beginning of next year for our EL students that will train all teachers at the high school.
And the Abbott program is very expensive to sustain, so is there enough to have this official grant to be able to, you know, kind of get for everybody? It seems like this year they're starting to go with the habit program, not to kind of just kind of check, consider, consider their student by itself at all. You know, so that's not to just, not let the students know.
Well, we also want to make sure that those strategies are being in school-wide. And one of the things that, that the loss team talked about, when they came, they, they held up a piece of paper, which was our core elements. We have a, we have core elements that we have a template for. And they asked, how many of you have seen this before? And every hand, you know, we had kids, and they were impressed because, you know, usually when we, when you form a group of students, it's all your top students. I had, I had a group of seven, how did, how did they get picked?
I don't know.
It could have been a random hat, but I really wanted a good selection of kids. And so they were very impressed by the different selection of kids, all the seven from 12th grade. But every, every hand went up and they explained what form was, how to use the form. And they were very impressed because we had a school-wide practice that has definitely proven to be very effective. Yeah, yeah. She was not the one who selected it.
I mean, you know, it looks very interesting, but I'm still worried a little bit about what is happening with that. I mean, at the levels and, you know, it's just...
Yeah, that's...
And I think it has been for years, Dr. Lee.
We've already structured that and we now are using digital technology that we selected on purpose of really reinforcing some basic skills. So we seem to have to spend so many years from elementary to high school just focusing on basic, very methodical basics.
We, we had, I mean, it's like, we had a discussion today with the math department, Mr. Wyckoff and I in my office about next year. How are we going to support our kids that are, are not doing well in math? How do we address their individual needs? And it's really about looking at the data and what parts that they need help with. Uh, geometry, is it statistics, you know, really analyzing, um, their math skills and really addressing that in a way that I think. The digital curriculum, as Dr. Montalvo mentioned, will be a big part of how we invest that.
Well, I think that's the start, is that we really do small conversations and sessions and we reflect, you know, what more can we do? So we can deliver, uh, to my, in that level of instruction.
I think it's also good for teachers as well, because part of it is, you know, teaching, helping us.
It's very interesting for me that, you know, the elementary school students are doing really well when they get to the third. Something happened on the transition that, you know, it's like, you, what, what is getting lost?
You know, there's a lot of studies about the middle school ages and it's really a tough, it's a tough transition. Um, you know, this year we looked, as a staff, we looked at our scheduling and trying to figure out ways to address that. And if there's a way to separate out the junior high and maybe the lower. You know, that jump from elementary school where you have one teacher all day long to essentially a high school schedule with seven classes, seven different teachers, could be really tough for kids. And so we're trying to find a way that we might be able to alter the schedules. We have a, a separate junior high schedule and high school schedule. We're looking at that for, as something to explore next year because, um, you know, there's, there's things like advisory and other, other, um, things that happen in some middle schools that helps support kids in a different way, like develop whole kids. When I, when I taught, um, in our high or middle school, we had multi-age groups. So I taught the sixth, seventh, eighth grade class and really had that mentorship. The eighth graders really took on the seventh and sixth graders and really, you know, were the mentors and the leaders of that group. And the sixth and seventh graders were able to kind of just find their way through that and had peers help them out. I think it's a huge, it's a huge, um, when we have our Safe School ambassadors, we have our high school, they work on the junior high. You know, that's out of, out of class, but what if they had that same kind of support within the classroom? You know, looking, wow, that, that could be real powerful. We see models down in Napa, various schools, other schools, where they do some of the orientations. And maybe that, that might be a great way to, you know, bring kids along and kind of introduce them to school without that slight appearance of first day kind of thing. Um, it's exactly, you know, we try the orientations and things like that to kind of soften the blow, but, you know, that's a one-day shot kind of thing. And there are ongoing things, um, you know, having teachers really work with kids. Or one-to-one, it gets a little kids on a personal basis, kind of like the Abbott programs. You know, they add that same group all the way through, well, can we do something like advisory, we have the same kids all the, you know, and these two junior high together, um, so that teachers get to know the kids.
Especially because the SCA, usually us people, like, it's usually the seniors are paired up with the seventh graders. So we're leaving and then they're probably like, oh, we're leaving out there and whatnot. So it would be more better, like, they would be paired with, like, the creator or someone like close to the ring. So that it wouldn't be like they get here and then we, yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's all constant.
And I think kids know each other somewhat from the elementary school already, so when they come up here, they're, they're, it's not a different group of kids. They, they, they're familiar with them. Um, and I think that's the same thing about in high school, well, it's a close to, you know, everybody. But I think that's, that's that family feeling that, that we need to be honored.
Okay, so March, I barely remember March. It was like, it was like slow, but it was fast, I guess, um, it was, it was weird, it was a weird month. But there was a lot to it. Um, our play was in March. I didn't get to see it, but I heard it was really good. Yeah, and what else? Open house.
Oh, open house.
Yeah. Everybody was, um, really, I don't know, super setting it up. And I was like, whoa, I've never seen this type of open house. And I thought it was pretty cool and even though I wasn't really inside because they kept me outside with the, the tech connections. Um, so I was with the computers and like trying to sell computers and things like that. But I heard there was a lot of people, it was a gym, and I thought it was really nice. And my parents like to play games, which was very surprising. So I was like, oh, hi. Yeah, so I thought that was cool. And then the... No, my sister invited, my sister did a little DNA project with Mr. Girl. So she was, she told them, oh, open houses today. And they, um, so they did, and they stayed for a while. And then I thought it was really nice because also people would wander out into the lobby. And they'd be like, oh, do you know what this is? Or, you know, like, just a gram question. And I would be like, oh yeah, I can go to this table. And like, everything was so organized that I would be like, do this and like, keep my, my business. So I thought that was pretty cool and it went, it went pretty smooth actually. And, uh, the pamphlet, it was like a little...
The passbook?
Yeah, the passbook. I thought that was, uh, pretty cool too because like, you get like a little stamp or something. And then you get like a little bag, you get a bag after. Um, I don't know, it was a nice way to get to know, you know, probably the teachers, but like the students, like some students could be, you know, who were like already in that gap, like, and it's just like, oh, here, seven teachers. You know, you get a feeling of cool too and, and I thought that was pretty cool too. And, um, yeah, I think that's it. Oh, we raised our comp to the prices today because, um, we're supposed to buy them for cheaper price, of course we raised. So we stopped selling them to students for now, for prom and PSC.
Good turnout so far? Good turnout?
Yeah, I think we have about fifty people on board. Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're going to keep coming because...
Was the price too low?
With A S C programs. Yeah, and then the yearbooks are still, they kept it forty dollars, so they're pretty good too. And, yeah.
I saw that you, um, you have a learning closet and I said, what is that?
Oh, yeah. Uh, the learning closet basically lets us borrow a progress for free. And we just have to return it within a week. And let's see if it has to be like...
No, they, they, you clean later, um, donate their time. So when the student receives a dress, it's just been right. And then as soon as they return it, they all get sent up to get right. They, the learning closet just recently moved from Napa County Office of Education to, um, who's it? Sarah A. Stiles, so she, you know, in Napa. But they, any school, any student in Napa County has access to this.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty much... I, I, I was supposed to look at it, but I totally blanked out. And, um, yeah, and they, I guess it's everybody in the county that needs to go. And they can just pick their comp and have them just sort of green. And, uh...
I, I have five dresses in my office that I recently, that a local caristoga woman donated to us. So of course, anybody can, you have some shoes, so anybody can, you know, like, do it for us.
I was very glad, too.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Before I forget, David, you know, it was a beautiful back to school event.
It was fun, but, yeah, it was definitely fun. So, yeah, we were very excited about it, pizza out here and... Obviously like the kids, you know, who energized and showed what they're doing. Exactly, I mean, the wood shop area, they were very excited. And the power and...
I, I would just like to add that, um, our students came back really excited. So many of our students came out and attended. And Mr. Wykoff, um, went to visit our school choir to just kind of remind students and send the flyers. And so it was so exciting to see so many of the students come back and listen. It's, it's a good way to get them acquainted, I mean, even though, you know, two schools, but for them to feel like already they're, they're being embraced. So they, they, see, you have a great opportunity to come, so I'm going to remind them, still need to come. Excited for our, 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 we'll give them weeks and then they can.
And I think it was a great opportunity for our teachers to meet parents and really comfort the parents about who we are as, as teachers. Um, like I said, the Mr. Grohl's project, I mean, I think with a lot of parents, I think we're talking about those science projects, certainly that, or all the different teachers. I know the English teacher was telling you that she met a lot of the parents and was asking, um, comic book or what's it like in junior, junior high compared to middle school. I know that a lot of the teachers had that opportunity to really talk one-to-one with parents, whereas a traditional open house they may not have. So this is my, I mean, I'm so excited.
Yeah, sure.
It's a better venue for, for that kind of dialogue to occur.
It's true engagement.
Yes.
And the students were like the media wars.
Oh, the fashion show?
Yeah. All the, all the sports kids came out and did their uniforms in that. We got to see all the uniforms, yeah. And the pizza truck was, of course, a nice time.
And these are very important things to showcase the word for the, for the teachers and to see what they're doing. And the kids, obviously, and then, you know, for, um, they, you know, the wood shop, my God, that, that was incredible, so.
And next year over to the tiny house. So, and then Mr. Wykoff really did a great job. He really had, took that, kind of made it, what it was, was one recognize, just, that effort worked, I guess. Like, being said, he went to the elementary school to make sure that the city had to shut up.
Did you remember to send someone call out? Yeah, send a video. You know, make sure you do.
Oh, yeah. He was very excited. Yeah, we were setting up, we wanted to put the, the banners right here. And he was like, no, let's put them on top, like, on top of the ceiling. And then Tony was telling him that we couldn't because the, the stretch, the people. I don't know, but, um, that they could get mad because they're not supposed to take anything off there. And we, I guess he convinced them or something.
That's how he got it.
Yeah. But he, he struggled for that, but he got it.
Great job. Thank you.
Do it again.
Until the pizza people can read all of it. Okay, eleven point seven, district practices supporting the L cap.
As we always do, we're bringing back to you on a monthly basis, basically some of the activities that were engaged in the core L cap. So I don't know, you already heard, uh, from.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, citizens, over to Nicole Biege.
I'd like to introduce Lisa Skinner, President of our City of the South Committee. And Lisa's going to review there and over for fifteen. I'd also like to thank Lisa for her leadership for this committee, which had a great job. But I'm a little lost, I think in our last meeting to review the, um, the C O P issuance and also the Phase Two project. And we started a shift in, of other conversations, so Lisa brought everybody right down to the table and brought, ran it, everything back in. So, uh, you want to thank her for the reviews.
You're welcome. Welcome. It's been a pleasure to, to serve as President of the Committee. I'd like to thank everybody for having us start me representing the, the rest of the group today. Um, so here we are with our annual report to the community. This is our two thousand fourteen, fifteen annual report. And, um, basically this is the overview of the fiscal year and then the whole, the project as a whole to date. So the most exciting thing we got on the first sentence, Phase One is done. And, um, that's really neat because most of us have been on this committee, on the oversight committee, have been here since the beginning. And to be able to see it through and for more to purpose to stay there, to see us, for us to see this through completion, has really been gratifying for us. So we appreciate being able to serve the extra term for the board.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. And so now that we are done with Phase One, we'll be, we've got this report that shows how we closed this out and then, as you know, we're moving forward. So I just wanted to go over a couple of highlights on the report here. Um, if we could go to page, I think two and three are on the same slide. The next one. So on the left here, um, this is just something that we like to put out about the committee. And, um, I think this helps people to understand our role as the oversight committee. We had a challenge when we first began. People wanted to come to us and make things happen. And we pushed them back to you, so I'm sure you got one of those. Um, but we do, so what we did is we listed our authorized activities on our action plan. This is part of our agenda every time we need, so that we make sure that we are doing what we've been charged to do and not overstepping any bounds for things that should happen at the border at the district level. But it's a lot of reviewing. We review the audit reports, both the performance and the financial audit. We're happy to take tours of the lovely facilities and see the progress and now to see the completion. Um, and then talk with Terry and the different folks that from the blog and the different people about how things are going, cost-saving measures that have been implemented. So this is, we'd just like to put this out as part of our, our charter for the committee. Um, and then we can see here, um, this is basically Phase One that's come to completion. And I know you get the people in this room talk about this and see it every day, but the report to the community, I think, is really important because they don't let them breathe it. And to really see what we've done, both here, like, and part of it, um, what, what's been done at both schools, this is really, this is really a lot. And to see this is to be able to say, DSA sign off and Phase One complete and every penny of that bond money has been spent, um, is really exciting and should be for the whole community, not just the people at the schools that are on the board. So might be rehashing, but, you know, the library, the solar panels, this beautiful kitchen right here, this room, the, the lovely gym, um, and that's all done. And what we've done to kind of outline is not only where we've been, but where we're going, because people here, forty-two million, and we've only spent seventeen. And so what happens next? Um, Phase Two, that we talked about for the summertime, is not part of the G O B, the bond. Um, but we might, in a future phase, use bond funds to pay back the C O P. So that would be something that we might be looking at down the road. And that's another thing that we want to make sure the community sees, because when you hear people throw out acronyms like C O P and G O B, you don't necessarily know what those mean unless you would know them all a bit. So we tried to outline that that piece, that their Phase Two is going, but we're stepping back a little bit this year as that happens. And then go back up, when did we get the last page? This is in our folder format, so we've got page one and four together. And then Terry and I always have fun because we like this page the best, it's got all the numbers on it. Um, and then it has the most important statement, which I'd just like to, to read, and that is, um, when we look at the, at the audit of the financial statements, and the firm's tested resulted in no findings and recommendations related to the audit of the measure and bond building fund for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. And that's what we like to see, about, we like to hear. We thank you, Terry, for keeping such great books. Um, you make our jobs really easy by everything that you do to keep that fun. Um, this is just a really nice overview. This is all the expenditures for June thirtieth. You'll see there's a little bit, ninety-four thousand dollars that was left in the fund at the end of the year. Those ones have been spent, so we are officially done with the, with the bond funding for Phase One. And this gives a nice overview of where the money went. Obviously, most of it came here to the junior senior high school, but there was, you know, significant pieces for each of the projects. And I think that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Lisa, does this, uh, get distributed to the, to the community?
I wasn't sure if it had gone out yet or if we waited until after this meeting.
We were waiting until after we presented to the board and then we distributed the, um, committee members have different organizations that they're part of, they take them to those organizations, some of the distributors are over there, so all of those different organizations and put them all over.
We have always wanted to pass, actually, uh, inserted them as part of the normal paper, so we can, we can do that and ensure that they have to.
I was just curious because you both did so much work, but a nice number, and I don't think you could see it from a, it's just all the methods you've stayed with.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a huge amount of money that I don't think people understand you guys worked very hard to.
Well, in addition to that too, this strictly just reflects the general obligation funds. Uh, the district spent a few million out of the general fund to improve facilities, but those are separate. We could, I guess, include that, the, that statement too.
Yeah, so this, this is the oversight committee's report on manual report and their own reporting out on the G O B funds and how we spent them and whether the district spent this on.
But I mean, you did extend this across G O B because we got to be.
I think we were actually able to do other things with the G O B funds because of the savings in certain areas. We, because we have this discussion a lot at our meetings, we talk a lot about cost savings, so we're going to spend less money, right? No, we're going to spend all the money.
Right.
And so it's how the money gets to be spent and what are the other things that we could do because of the savings in other areas or because of the district funds that were able to be supplemented.
That's correct. So for, for example, upgrading the, the technology infrastructure rather than doing, um, standard technology, H D M I, doing high-end technologies. So that's how we do apply this, the E rate funding, um, you know, all the testing and recertification of all of the cable and throughout the district. There are a number of ways that we use the E rate funding that's supported. How we spent the G O B funds.
And I think it's an important thing to keep in mind is that the voter mandate is to spend the funds and it wasn't to save it and not spend it, to spend.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think it is, there's, yeah, I just think that they did a lot of hard work to.
To get more out of it.
Get more out of it, yeah. We got a lot out of it. Oh, yeah, we did, we should be able to afford that, you know, just to maximize and that we do it. Great. And it's been wonderful having Lisa, um, as I said, as the President, she really understands we really, I'm not going to talk about it right now here, you really understand, um, the mechanisms that are used and how they come together to support and understanding that cost savings don't mean that we don't spend all the money. It means that we save money in areas that we can so that we can use it to further enhance what we're doing with all the others. And Lisa's a great job of reminding the committee when, when there's a conversation about that.
Even when we were looking at this, it's like, whoa, we still have ninety-four thousand dollars, we're going to do ninety-four thousand dollars. We, we got it covered. We figured it out. We didn't, we didn't go over, but we ended the year and, and we got that covered.
And now we've got answers.
It looks great.
A quick question, is this, um, report going to be translated?
Yes.
I was remembering last year.
It was, right? Yeah. We also do the English translation and like I said, we put it in a paper and it'll go in the book as the translation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Nine point nine, preliminary budget update, top fifteen, thousand sixteen.
Very good. Thank you. So, um, well, this has been a very interesting, um, for budget development. You know, we've shifted to new financial software to new schools. And we've been, um, waiting for the, the introduction on how to go to development in the new system. Like I said, the three and a half hour that we strained last week, in which we, it was determined, um, long-term plans that will be using the old financial system. And the new financial system, well, the new person.
It don't sound so exciting.
Uh, so budget development is in process. Um, as I say, typically, this time I have a draft budget to present to, um, but we were waiting to try to do in the system. So we're back with the committee next morning. Um, and, uh, we have a public hearing next month for that. And so you'll, you're seeing a summary that's going to be available in the District Office. It's intended, it's part of the public hearing, so it will be available, the board has the summary to figure. And it's going to just be a very basic summary, it's not going to be a statute. Um, but we will include with that all of the budget assumptions, how we look at the budget. We will continue to provide a quick update regarding the budget, how the writing happens happening, um, and making sure there are any new revenues or new expenses. One new revenue that's a concern is, um, one-time funding that, um, it's a hundred eight hundred ten dollars per A D A. Um, and basically the governor is saying, well, this is going to wipe out part of our deficit that we owe districts for prior year mandatory cost claims. We have spoken, we're going to go over five hundred thousand dollars in prior year mandatory costs. And, um, uh, school services, yes, even our agencies are disputing the legitimacy, the constitutionality of reducing that because not all school districts have prior year mandatory claims. Not all districts apply, but things, the charter schools do that. So constitutionally, they're saying it's illegal, um, to reduce or over if you're not using it. It's very easy to lose it. So, um, well.
Yeah. Yeah. I wonder if it's. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, Derek. Moving on to, um, item twelve point zero, consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent agenda are being put in in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will, there would be no separate discussion of these items unless any member of the board, the audience, or staff, because of specific items, are moving on the consent agenda for separate action. Any changes? Anything?
And will we approve the consent agenda?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and this is a roll call. Trustee Manfield?
Hi.
Trustee Man? Trustee Alcichin?
Yes.
Trustee Kiliu?
Hi.
See the verbal press? Trustee Loco?
Hi.
Action items. Item thirteen point zero. The protocol for action items include a staff presentation, questions from the board, public input, deliberation by the board, and boarding by the board. During public input, there would be a three-minute time limit per person. We're moving to thirteen point one, resolution fourteen fifteen oh nine.
So this resolution, um, is also certifying that we no longer have, um, classrooms on the junior senior health campus that are be locable classrooms that were issued for housing community development. Um, it's required, reviewed all of the portal buildings on this campus and asked the firm that we do not have, that did the newest criteria and so we're asking the board to approve the resolutions. that we do not have, that didn't meet this criteria, and so we're asking for to approve the resolutions. These are the buildings that, these are the classrooms that were added, but two more.
Thanks for supplying to the elementary school too.
We were only notified that there were two buildings at the junior senior high, but as I say, it's required, review all of the portable things. We do, we're sure there are no, there are no, there are not, not house students.
I didn't recall, there were two portable buildings that we used for hours to do special education classes. Those were basically taken out and replaced by the classrooms that we have that are part of the university as part of Base One, so we don't want that. Those are not students. So what about the building, how's it going?
Oh, isn't that a great ability? That one is, yes.
Really?
It actually is. It's just very old and it's still, it can still run student, but we should not. Are students there? It's not, we would want our students to go through, you know? Not for students. But it's, it is, it is a good.
Thank you, we were told initially that was.
One second.
Hold on, same paper?
Hi.
Any clues?
Sorry, I, I'm the last to see the paper.
Yeah. Thank you. Thirteen point two, adoption of instructional materials. We are recommending that the board approve the adoption of new instructional material that aligns with common core. Apparently, the current excellence that we use in our whole and integrating the, the place and besides, obviously, there's a shift now to the secondary training. Before you, it's basically the process that we use, we go through to make the selection and implementation. Which is more involved, but it's a wonderful, kind of, kind of this whole school district is that every teacher gets to have its, one, certain, its special material signature. They don't all agree. This is what they want. It's some of the, it's obviously some stage of those. All right, nowadays, all of the publications are going, are going to have those components. They're going to have students who have access to text online. However, we still need to provide them with our copies just because some students may not have access to data, so.
Why don't we adopt the new instructional material?
Okay. Student, right, focus? Hold on, same paper?
Hi.
Anybody clues? Okay, moving on, thirteen point three, the Citizens Oversight Committee's appointment.
So you remember that when our committee members were coming out for the rule of the second term, that a new registration has allowed sort of community terms. The second term, those reserve two terms, the second term is exciting. And I encourage our committee members to serve another term. And every committee member has a special desire to do so. And we're going to be checking with our bond council. Since all of the committee members are choosing to be, be not appointed, or can simply reform all the committee members to serve another two-year term. It's likely that it's probably only about, probably three more meetings during the next two years because of course we close up this year when we do that, and then, and then, so that's probably two, maybe three more meetings of course in the next two years. And many of the members will not be eligible to serve that this third term. You can see that most of the members will have the year as first six members, and this will be their third term. So I'm asking the board, if I should request a three-point community response. And before you make that, what I'd like to quote is that, is that regulation of the information was that we could post numbers together and also free. They definitely have, they're very impressive how well we're working together. And as you can see, they're very understanding and are committed to say for them to spoke about their responsibilities and how they're stationed, who they're charging for. So, anyway, I find that they, you know, you can, you know, somewhere down.
I move that we appoint, three appoint the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Okay. Student, right, focus? Hold on, same paper?
Hi.
Oh, actually, this was local. All right, okay. Trustee McPhill?
Hi.
Trustee Alphichin?
Hi.
Trustee DeJulius?
Hi.
And right, focus? Thank you. Trustee Lopez, hi. Item fourteen point zero, the future agenda items. We have the agenda, tentative agenda items for May and June.
On the, on the, on May, I think you see the second annual report, it's something that, I think that's a correction, but you will remember when I brought you the second annual report, I said to you about when they rolled the budget into the second year from the first year, they duplicated numbers and doubled our fund balances. So our gain fund balances in Fronton One are just one hundred and eighty thousand, I suppose, one hundred thousand. So I'm bringing this report out as a.
Also, I would just like the highlight that in May, we're going to have two public hearings, one for the local component loading plan, which we have to do every single year from now on. And then the other one for the budget. And then, of course, those two items will be brought to you for approval and review.
I will apologize in advance for missing the May meeting.
Okay. Oh, it's great. And I'm going to be present on the twenty-second, so.
We're counting them for each.
Wait. Thank you. Again, fifteen point zero, the board calendar. For this two-year later, we only have two board meetings, one in May and one in June. So the beginning in May, we probably showed the address holding. Remember that in July, we don't hold the holding, so that's all we have. Moving on to sixteen, sixteen point zero, the events. Are you ready at this point to make a commitment as to what promoting ceremony of celebration to the life of a pen? We already had requests from past behind, you would like to live with an ice cold. Anybody else for the ice?
What are we going to do?
Yeah, I'll, I'm free as well.
So how do you, how do you want to?
If you want to think about this fusion, whatever that is.
So nowadays, okay.
Perfect. Astro is a busy girl.
Actually, you know what, let me just say that don't put hands. Okay, no, this is not. Oh, that's good, okay. Wonderful, taking volunteers.
Thank you, let us know.
Yeah, we're excited.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll work on it.
Okay, there is no need to, um, recommend closed session.
I move the major speed.
Thank you very much. So Monique, today is your first official day.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations, I'm welcome. A great job, a great agenda. Yes.